All right. So, we are out of executive session. And we are moving forward with the agenda. Gather my sense of direction? Gather my sense of direction? So, we will recommence the regular town council meeting. And move on with the appointments. On to A, Kathleen Lindstrom, to ARB. Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask this council to approve the appointment of Kathleen Lindstrom, Democrat, 288 Guinea Road, to the Architecture Review Board for term ending 12/5/20.
Motion by Ms. Martin. Is there a second? Second. Second by Mr. Maurer. Ms. Martin, discussion?
Kathy Lindstrom is a 50-year resident at the Town of Monroe. Previously served two terms as an alternate on the Planning and Zoning Commission. In addition to that elected position, she's many years of volunteer work, including Monroe Cert, Save Our Stepney Task Force, Western Connecticut Score, Reger Bridgeport, League of Women Voters, and as a computer tutor for the Trumpus Senior Center and Booth Library in Newtown. Ms. Lindstrom will be a viable contributor to the Architecture Review Board, and this appointment fills a vacancy created by Nancy Steinbauer.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And against, that motion carries, nine to zero. Thank you, Ms. Martin. Moving on to Appointment, Item B, David Townsend, to ARB. Mr. Rooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make the motion to appoint David Townsend of 25 Historic Drive to the Architecture Review Board for a term ending 12/5/20.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Rooney, second by Ms. Lepalas. Mr. Rooney, discussion?
David Townsend resigned from planning and zoning due to increased demands of his jobs and family. However, he expressed a desire to remain active with a less demanding board after his resignation. Due to his time at P&amp;Z, Mr. Townsend is well-suited for this position. This appointment fills the vacancy created by Tim O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And against, motion carries. Ms. Martin?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Nine to zero. Moving on to C is Robert Roche, to Conservation and Water Resources Commission. Mr. Rooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make the motion for Robert Roche, 24 Echo Wood Circle, to the Conservation and Water Resources Commission for a term ending 12/5/18.
Motion by Mr. Rooney, second by Ms. Lepalas. Discussion, Mr. Rooney?
Robert Roche has been the Chair of Board of Ethics for six years. Due to term limits for Board of Ethics members, Mr. Roche cannot be reappointed to that Board. He expresses a wish to stay active and demonstrate an interest in participating on the Conservation Commission. This appointment fills the vacancy created by Jeffrey Felchino.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And against, motion carries, nine to zero. We've done D, on to E, Anthony Marciano, to Board of Ethics, full member. Mr. Rooney?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Anthony Marciano, 29 Prep Mar Circle, to Board of Ethics, full member, to replace Brian Purdy for a term ending January 1st, 2020.
Motion by Mr. Rooney, second by Ms. Lepalas. Discussion, Mr. Rooney?
Mr. Marciano is the current alternate on Board of Ethics to replace Mr. Purdy, who cannot be appointed, reappointed due to Board of Ethics term requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor? And against, motion carries, nine to zero. F, Brian Purdy, to Parks and Rec. Mr. Rooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Brian Purdy, of 338 Cross Hill Road, to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term ending 10/21/19.
Motion by Mr. Rooney, second by Ms. Lepalas. Discussion, Mr. Rooney?
Due to term limits on the Board of Ethics, Mr. Purdy cannot be reappointed to that Board. He expressed an interest in remaining involved and will move to the Parks and Recreation Commission. This appointment fills the vacancy created by Jennifer Pinta.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. Any further discussion?
Is that, um, date right, 10/20? He said 19.
October 21st, 2019.
This is what we have here. That's, um...
It's the month first.
Mine says 22.
There's a...
But you're under a penalty.
Yeah, there's a correction there. You're looking at the wrong.
No, I believe, I believe, um, 21/19 is...
Is correct.
22 is correct?
I believe it's correct.
Which one's correct?
We're voting on 19. That's what the agenda says.
Yeah, so, okay.
So, it's one on the agenda?
It's one, October 21st, 2019.
I'm sorry, you think maybe, uh, where's the discrepancies?
Yeah.
There was a couple of discrepancies that were vetted through the town clerk. So, these are correct, corrected, terminated.
We'll question my agenda. All right, let's go. Move on to...
It's a funny question.
I guess I can make a joke about something fairly benign, right? All right. Further discussion? Smart, anything further?
No.
All right. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And against, motion carries, nine to zero. Item G, Anthony Testo, to Building Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make the motion to appoint Anthony Testo, of 46 Valleyview Road, to the Building Board of Appeals for a term ending 10/1/22.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Rooney, second by Ms. Lepalas. Discussion, Mr. Rooney?
Mr. Testo is a 45-year resident in Monroe with a background in construction and property development. This appointment fills the vacancy created by Christopher Thornley.
I'll just state for the record that Mr. Testo is related to me by, through marriage. I don't think I have to recuse myself, but based upon the past precedent of counsel, I will do so in an abundance of caution. So, I'll state that. But all those in favor of this? Any further discussion? I'm sorry. My discussion, seeing none. All those in favor? And against, that's, motion carries, eight, zero, lonely one. Moving on to H, Jose Paul, to Board of Ethics. Mr. Rooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jose H. Paul, of 60 Jackie Hollow Road, to Board of Ethics to replace Matthew Nyden for a term ending 1/11/2020.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Rooney, second by Ms. Lepalas. Discussion, Mr. Rooney?
Mr. Nyden has served for three consecutive terms on Board of Ethics, cannot be reappointed. Mr. Paul is an attorney, who has lived with his family in Monroe for almost three years, looking to get involved with local government after participating in soccer and basketball activities. We believe his legal backgrounds and training will enhance the Board's abilities in reviewing ethics issues.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And against, motion carries, nine to zero. Item I is Ronald Schneider, to ZBA. Mr. Rooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ronald Schneider, of 553 Musso Road, to the zoning Board of Appeals for a term ending 11/30/20.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney, second by Ms. Lepalas. Discussion, Mr. Rooney?
Ronald Schneider is a six-year resident in Monroe, who is a sales manager for a local car dealership. Mr. Schneider has a strong background in management and is seeking to get involved for the first time in local government. Mr. Schneider's wife is actively involved in the youth commission. His strong managerial skills will help the zoning board of appeals manage projects and workload. This appointment fills the vacancy created by Robert Soracco.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. Any further... I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And against, motion carries, nine to zero. Mr. Rooney, you're almost done. I see you had a very, very busy week. That's probably why Mr. Hostler was so intrigued by all of these wonderful appointments. So, I congratulate you on a job well done. All of this reading, so we'll move on to your last one. Under K, Jane O'Reilly, to Board of Ethics, alternate.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just lost my spot there for a second.
I messed it up.
She's on the back page. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion, Jane O'Reilly, of 100 Webb Circle, to Board of Ethics, alternate, to replace Anthony Marciano for a term ending 10/1, it's 10/1/2020. That is also January.
It's October 1st, 2019, Mr. Rooney.
I'll second it.
So, motion by Mr. Rooney, second by Ms. Lepalas. For record, the term will be ending October 1st, 2019.
Got you.
Discussion, Mr. Rooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the correction.
No problem.
Ms. Riley is a long-term resident in Monroe and is an educator with Fairfield Prep. Her husband currently serves on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and she acknowledged that she, that, she acknowledged that should an issue come up that involves her husband, she would have to recuse herself of any votes. That's an interesting background. But, please, let me know if you need any additional information. This fills the vacancy created by Anthony Marciano.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. Any further discussion?
She did go through her own way as well, so...
She did. We talked toward LNA.
So, she did satisfy the LNA condition precedent. Thank you very much for the information, Mr. Rooney, and Mr. Aguilera. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And against, motion carries, nine to zero. Job well done on all those appointments. Action items, Mr. Rooney, you're not done yet. So, the first A is the Town Council Committee on Finance, Education, Health, and Public Safety. You are the chairman of that subcommittee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have not met since last council, but we will meet on Wednesday to discuss an area. That's all I have to report.
Great. Thank you very much. Moving on to B is Planning and Zoning Subcommittee. Ms. Lepalas?
Yes, starting with Park and Rec. Maintenance, doing field work on Field 2. They edged and prepped the infield. There was a discussion on the storage at Chalk Hill. The former industrial arts area is being utilized for storage. Park and Rec is organizing the room for supplies and items not used on a regular basis. And then renovation of Field 4 was discussed. Sod's been placed down, still needs to add fencing, backstop, and player seating dugout. Literally expressed interest in helping out. Going on to, they had a little more old business. Let's see, nothing really special I would have to worry about. EDC voted to only do with remaining funds, the video brochure, and Monroe gear. They will revisit priorities for 2018 at the next meeting. And then, actually, the reporter is here, that there was an excellent piece on the proposed zoning about, the Twombly's are, it's not a secret, are building 16 homes on the corner of Cutlass Farm and Purdy Hill. But there's an existing home there that was built before 1960. So, there was a big discussion on the driveway, because they have, the 1960 home has a driveway, I believe, leading out to Cutlass Farm Road. Those other 16 homes are going to be very similar to Great Oak Farm, where they each have a driveway, but they only can go out, there's an egress and an ingress on, onto to Cutlass Farm. But not everybody can just get willy-nilly onto Cutlass Farm. So, and Brian, who's sitting in the audience, did an excellent article on that. And that takes care of my report.
Thank you, Ms. Lepalas. Moving on to C is the LNA Subcommittee, Mr. Reed?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did those interviews tonight, as we saw. In addition, you'll see coming up in our new business, I'm sorry, unfinished business, the resolutions regarding the Wolf Park Summer Concert Series. So, we have an update on that, to use that for discussion. And then, we will be scheduling some, some time coming up, the next meeting, we'll work with the First Selectman's Office on the purchasing policy. So, that'll be the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Moving on to D, Strategic Planning. Mr. Condon?
Strategic planning, we've been at since our last meeting, but we will be meeting this week.
So, you said no meeting?
No meeting.
Meeting this week. And the focus of that meeting is on the...
Capital budget.
Yeah. EMS, is there an update on EMS?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did have a scheduled meeting for tomorrow night. However, with opposing meetings, we have decided to reschedule that. We do not have a date set. Thank you.
Moving on to the Fire Services Study Committee. Is there any report on that yet?
There has been no further meetings since our last meeting. Still waiting for the consultation for it.
And last is the First Selectman's update, Mr. Keller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did pass out a hard copy report, just to highlight for you, obviously, the biggest issue facing the town the last couple of weeks have been the succession of a couple of storms that came through that caused power outages throughout the town. The first one with about, just under 300 residents, the second one with well over 4,000 residents, or over half the town, that was out, out of power. We did have some frustrating moments in the first storm relative to timelines for restoration, which we made very, made our concerns very well-known with Eversource. I'm very pleased in their response to the second storm. We had an incredible show of resources here in town in a, in a much faster time. And I, you know, I think we were able to get them to step up to the plate on getting a much more robust restoration schedule. In the second storm, we did go into full response mode. I opened up our emergency operations center so that we could coordinate all the response and recovery efforts, as well as provide services such as sheltering and potable water and showers and things like that. We will be doing a after-action review at some point in the future. The, probably the biggest contingency in setting up will be the schedule of Eversource, because I have asked them to participate in that. I want to talk about not just the successes and things that went really well, but also some of the challenges that we feel need to be addressed from the first storm. Even though, even though we seem to get past some of those issues, I think they still need to be discussed. So, we will be scheduling that internally. The other thing I wanted to just emphasize is my thanks to all the town departments. I think they performed extremely well. The team did a remarkable job, and we had a long list of departments and people that I listed there for you that were very instrumental in our recovery efforts. And I thank them, and I thank the citizens of Monroe for their patience as we got through this. The other two items I wanted to bring up were just some personnel matters. Unfortunately, I have more, another retirement, so some sad news, and that we'll be losing our library director, Margaret. She's going to be retiring in May. She's been here for several years and certainly enjoy working with her, and she's given us phenomenal service, and we appreciate that. But she certainly, after 16 years here, has a well-earned retirement, and we'll, we'll miss her, but we'll wish her well. On a more, on a, another note, I'm happy to report that our, Justin Feldman, who was our acting assessor since September of last year, as of today, I have appointed him as a permanent assessor. So, we're very pleased with that, and I'm sure he'll continue to lead us, lead that department well in the future.
Can I make just one comment?
Thank you, Mr. Keller, yes, Ms. Lepalas?
Every place I went in town, kudos to you. Every place I went in town, we didn't have a phone. We have a generator, so we had electricity, but our phone never worked. The cell phone would work, the landline didn't work. So, people kept on saying, wow, Ken Kellogg, he kept on giving us all these updates. And I'm, and I'm saying to myself, I didn't get any update, only when I left, you know, my, my street, my phone kicked in. So, so, and I kept saying, well, that's great, does a really great job. And then the last one I got, because the power was back. So, that was, I'm going, now I know what the people were saying, how you, you know, you're down to 300 people or whatever. But it was excellent, because at least people knew that something was being done.
Thank you. Yeah, we tried to push that out, not only through voice, but also through email, website, Facebook, Twitter, and through the courier, so...
Mrs. Martin said I was a brownie.
A brown-noser.
Oh, sorry.
Anybody else?
That a motion for Kennedy had smoke signals.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Moving on to unfinished business, Chalk Hill, as promised, remains on our agenda. I do not believe anything has changed with regards to Chalk Hill, some agenda items, so it's open for comment, questions?
Can I ask a question about it? To, thank you, Mr. Chairman, to Mrs. Lepalas. You said that Parks and Rec talked about storage at Chalk Hill. Are they still storing their stuff at Chalk Hill, Parks and Rec?
I, yeah.
Yes.
So, yes, as part of, as part of, as part of the Chalk Hill hydration plan, there was a desire to maintain some cold storage, so that, so that we would not incur an expense to find out what to do with some of the Parks and Rec equipment that had been historically stored there. So, what actually happened was, through a collaborative effort with the fire marshal and with our own public works department, we worked to actually physically wall off. There's literally some doorways that have been completely, you know, concrete put over them to completely wall them off for the rest of the building for fire code purposes, so they could continue to store that, those items there. So, there's various machinery there, you know, snow blowers and things like that, that they store there.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Chalk Hill?
No.
Okay. Moving on to unfinished business, under B, we have resolutions regarding the Wolf Park Summer Concert Series contracts. We have five of them, I think, for record-keeping clarity of record. We're going to do them individually, so we'll start with number one, which is the Blue Raven Entertainment contract. Ms. Lepalas?
Yep. I will introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the agreement and any associated documents by and between Blue Raven Entertainment for the 2018 Summer Concert Series at Wolf Park.
Motion by way of resolution by Ms. Lepalas, is there a second? Second by Mr. Rooney. For discussion purposes, I'll turn the floor over to you, Mr. Kellogg. I don't know if you want, for simplicity purposes, you're welcome to discuss, you know, the process as a whole.
I, thank you, I'd be happy to. So, um, so as you know, the Summer Concert Series is something that's really a popular entertainment event, family entertainment that we do in the park. The Parks and Rec Department and Director Cooper has been working to procure artists for the upcoming season. He had obtained the standard contracts from all of these vendors, which in further discussion and referral to our town attorney, will note that town attorney has recommended a standard addendum to be attached to each of those. And with all but one exception, those were accepted by those vendors. So, that's why you have the addition of that to each, each contract.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Any further discussion? I just want to say, globally, I just, again, want to commend Mr. Kellogg for bringing these agreements persistently as they come across your desk, bring into our attention again. I know the Summer Concert Series has been going on for some time in town, and it's a great thing, and I'm, we're pleased with the product and, you know, providing that somewhat community feel to the, to town. I've heard great feedback, but this is the first time that we've seen agreements in this regard, and I, I do think it's important, as we saw from Attorney Hayden's letter, to have them reviewed by our council and to ensure that the town is being properly protected along the way. So, thank you for that, Mr. Kellogg.
I believe in my review of the contracts, the only, Blue Raven was the only one requesting hotel stay. Do we know approximate, what the approximate additional costs?
So, you know, I did go out to try and see what hotel rooms qualified for that level, you know, it was like, we started, it wasn't, it wasn't outrageous. And quite frankly, when I brought it, when I asked that question of Mr. Cooper, he said that last, even though it was in the agreement, it was in prior agreements, they didn't, they didn't even ask. So, we may not even have put them up, but it is in the agreement, so it's an understanding agreement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? All right. Seeing no further discussion regarding this contract, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And against, motion carries, nine to zero. Item two, sub two under B, is Mary Beth Sippin and Gold Rush. Ms. Lepalas?
Yep. I will introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the agreement and any associated documents by and between Mary Beth Sippin and Gold Rush for the 2018 Summer Concert Series at Wolf Park.
Motion by Ms. Lepalas, is there a second? Second by Mr. Maurer. Any specific discussion relative to this agreement? Seeing none, I'll just note for the record that we have Attorney Hayden's opinion letter as to all of the contracts, including this one. So, seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And against, motion carries, nine to zero. Three, the reunion band, Ms. Lepalas?
I will introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the agreement and any associated documents by and between Robert McLennifin and the reunion band for the 2018 Summer Concert Series at Wolf Park.
Motion by Ms. Lepalas, is there a second? Second by Ms., uh, Ms. Martin?
Me.
Ms. Martin, second by Ms. Martin. Any further discussion? In the future, what we can do, Mr. Kellogg, is this is like free advertisement, so they can send us a sample of their music, and we can play a little...
Play that, like the Academy Awards.
A little ditty that presses here, and we can, and then we get really excited for these upcoming performances, right?
Not.
To play one track.
Maybe do a little dance by Ms. Lepalas, as you said?
I could sing, I'm really good singing.
Did you joke to the Sounds of Frank?
I did, I, I...
I saw that one, I go, gee.
All right, all right. I'm regretting my tangent, I read. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor? And against, that motion carries, nine to zero. On to four, the Sounds of Frank, Ms. Lepalas?
I will introduce the following...
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
I'm not saying anything.
Budget season makes everybody go a little...
I will introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the agreement and any associated documents by and between the Sounds of Frank for the 2018 Summer Concert Series at Wolf Park.
Motion by Ms. Lepalas, by way of resolution, is there a second? Second by Mr. Rooney. Any further discussion regarding this specific contract? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And against, motion carries, nine to zero. Keep it going.
Or are you going to do it your way?
The last one is Tramps Like Us, Ms. Lepalas.
Oh, that's good.
Completely most critical.
Wait, is this like possible harassment?
Yes.
Okay. I will introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the agreement and any associated documents by and between Tramps Like Us, who are Springsteen tribute band for the 2018 Summer Concert Series at Wolf Park.
Motion by Mr. Lepalas, is there a second? Second by Mr. Condon. Any specific discussion relative to this contract?
There was mention to a rider, but the rider was not attached. Any idea as to what the costs of any items included in that rider?
Uh, I'm sorry, I thought that rider was attached, but it is on my copy. I will tell you that is, is anyone else?
I have the rider.
We had it in LNA.
I have it on my packet.
So, I can...
It's page three of three is the rider.
So, I can just, I can...
Sound check at six, lead-in at 4:30. That's what the rider says.
This is my report. Yeah. No, yours is here.
If that is, if that's the full, full rider.
I can tell you that.
The only difference.
Attorney Hayden has issued his opinion letter based upon his review of the agreement and rider, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Kellogg?
Yes, I would say there was only one, there was one, the, the, the other riders, the item six was removed from this contract. Other than that, it's identical.
Okay.
And we felt it was not an unreasonable request for what we're talking about.
Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor and against? That motion carries nine to zero. On to new business, A is the revision of the per diem food inspector job description to become per diem environmental health inspector. We have that description in our packet. Is there a motion, Mr. Palas?
I will introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Resolved the revisions of the job description currently titled per diem food inspector become per diem environmental health inspector.
Motion by Ms. Lapelis is our second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Condon. For discussion, I'll turn the floor over to you, Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, those of you who have been on council may recall a couple of years back when the, this per diem food inspector position was introduced at the time to deal with kind of seasonal fluctuations in food inspection, things like farmer's market, et cetera. What they have, what the board, what the, our, the health director has identified and has discussed with the Board of Health, who has also concurred, is that there really there's a need for this position, but in a more generic fashion. This is the same position that I, we discussed in the budget process to be funded, some per diem hours in next fiscal year and there's a subsequent item in our agenda to put some hours in this year. There is a need to handle some of that kind of fluctuation and overflow over time and what they're looking for, again, is to make this generic so that they could have a per diem resource to handle any public health inspection need, whether it be food, septic, salons, pools, whatever. Obviously, the person would have to be qualified for whatever they're inspecting. The health director would vet that. Currently, I'll tell you right now, they've identified a need for, to address more salons and so that's probably the, what they're looking to do immediately is to hire someone to do, to do some of those. But again, by making this job description more generic, we can respond not just to the immediate need, but also any future needs. So, if, you know, at a later date, the, the need isn't there, but all of a sudden we, we have an issue and we need to, you know, we need to flex and have, again, food people again, we can go back to that or pool or whatever it is. So, just a more, a more flexible approach to this.
Okay. Mr. Kellogg, any further discussion? Ms. Aguilera?
Yep.
I'm sorry, I have a question. When you say, when you say you would have somebody, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Kellogg, when you say we'd have somebody come and they would know what they're ta, I forget how you phrased it, would you have somebody for salons that knows salons? Would you have somebody for food that knows food? So, would this be the same person or is this contracting somebody?
It may or may not be. Well, it wouldn't be a contract. It would be a, a per diem person. So, we would, we, yeah, they would be.
So, it could be just not one person, but it could be depending upon what the need is.
Potentially, within the budgetary constraints, yes.
Okay.
But, yes, but obviously the person would have to be vetted by the health director and sure that they are qualified for whatever they're being hired to inspect, absolutely. But.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
It's just, it's a housekeeping thing. When we went through the job description before, did we decide the thirty-five pound lifting thing? We just, had we decided we would make it, this is old LNA, it would be uniform at, was that thirty-five? Just so it comes out right?
I believe we were, we, we decided, it did have to be looked at on a case-by-case basis based upon what responsibility is of the position and given the nature of this role and that it is out in the field and there could be times when you need to move things as you're doing an inspection and particularly if you're doing, you know, septic stuff, it could be, you know, tool.
I think what Ms. Martin was referring to, I think we looked at two administrative positions that had similar job functions with different.
That could have been weight requirements.
With weight requirements. I think the goal was to equalize those, but I don't know if this was a specific one.
I don't think it was, but just wanted to check.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
One more, one more question. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In LNA, we brought up the thirty-five pound thing also. We also wanted to know about the wording of nuisance in the, let me tell you what it is. In the new job description, it says on the bullet under job responsibilities, food service establishments, salons, subsurfaces, sewage, disposed water supplies, general governmental, environmental and nuen.
Nuisance.
Nuisances.
So, that would be in, in the event that they wanted them to actually respond to a complaint that came in from the general public, which may be directly, could be directly related to a food complaint. It could be someone complaining about smoke from a burning stove, kind of thing. So, again, I think their intent was just to be generic as possible, certainly not going to hire someone just for that, but if, if the, you know, the nature of what's occurring and she felt was appropriate to, if there was an influx of those type of things that we needed someone to go out and address those types of complaints, they would be able to do that.
Okay. I think our concern was just when one person's nuisance is not another person, that it could just become one person's nuisance and is that an objective thing or subjective?
Right. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor and against? That motion carries nine to zero. Moving on to item B under new business is transfer of funds in the health department. Mr. Palas?
I will introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Bead resolved that in accordance with chapter eight, section seven F of the Town Charter, the following transfer of funds within the health department budget for fiscal year 2017, 2018 is approved. So, from health operating expense $500 to health salaries, part-time $500.
Motion by way of resolution by Ms. Lapelis is our second. Second by Mr. Condon. Mr. Kellogg, I think it's fairly self-explanatory, but if you want to enlighten us.
It is, uh, no, it's, uh, as you said, self-explanatory based upon our prior conversation and, again, just looking to, I guess, incurring refunds to get this going in advance of the next fiscal year.
Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor and against? Motion carries nine to zero. I just would need a motion to amend the agenda at item C under new business, which is our consideration of the budget postcard for 2018, 2019, which is on the dais before you.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lapelis, second by Mr. Maurer. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor and against?
Sorry, sorry.
It's okay. Just doing my job. Nine, zero, to amend the agenda to add item C, budget postcard, 2018, 2019. Before us, we have the proposed budget postcard, just by way of some, some history Town Council has considered annually, the budget postcard. It was not done for many, many, as I've been here, or maybe the first year I was here, so at least five or six years ago, that council should have an opportunity to look at the postcard and to understand its phrasing before it goes out. So, we have before us the proposed postcard, so we can consider it. Do I have a motion to approve the budget postcard as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lapelis, second by Mr. Rooney.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, I don't know if I'm reading this right, but does it say 2018 to 2017?
Yeah, you took the low-hanging fruit, Mr. Rooney.
Sorry, I just, I did. Once in a while, I gotta wrap something.
So, that starts our discussion. Thank you, Mr. Rooney. We have one proposed change. As one. Are there any comments to the postcard? I can tell the new members of council that this has been an interesting debate over the years. We've had many opinions about how this should be phrased to the general public, especially in more contentious budget years with a more, more national or local dilemmas that are out there, we've faced before, but I don't know if this year qualifies in that regard, but it still may be open to opinion. Mr. Reed?
Yeah, I agree with you. It's always goes back and forth. I never remember where we land. Town could be confused, it's municipal, right? So, there's town and board of ed. I just wanted to make sure we were landing on the right side of that so it wasn't confusing. People in town have said, "Wait, is that the town budget? Is that the whole town budget?" Because we call the town budget to budget season. Our, our side is the town budget and there's the board of ed budget and then there's the municipal budget.
I think we referenced that. I, I think that historically there is some confusion to us because we love it, but I think Mr. Kellogg did a very good job with the Department of Finance this year qualifying the, throughout the budget process, it was the municipal budget and the board of ed budget and the overall budget being referred to as the town budget.
Good.
I think that was intentionally done, so.
Sure.
While our, our historical involvement may have been confusing, I think it's clear, at least relative to the budget process, and I think consistently we've called it the town budget, so I don't think there's a change there.
Yep.
Some of the debate has been how we just wanted to phrase that first line, but I think over the years, we have before us is a consensus as to all of the wonderful changes and additions and things of that nature. So, other than that one grammatical change, are there any other?
There was, there was, I just had two questions. So, the other one was we, and, and again, I'm only playing devil's outfit. So, the other one was, didn't we talk about separating out the two on the postcard?
I think that's my.
I, I don't remember ever getting close to there being a motion to consider that, but I wouldn't second-guess you on anything disgusting.
Definitely not a motion. I'm just asking.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't remember it ever being formally discussed.
The debate was generally.
Crazy allergy, right?
Right.
We've also discussed, you know, in the past, things like, is it appropriate to include a mill rate when we knew what the mill rate may have been? You know, it's arbitrary. So, I mean, we've, we've discussed this many times, especially we've had multiple referendums. We've seen many variations of the, of the postcard, reminders and things of that. So, a lot of the stuff that you see in the middle of the postcard below the, the correction that we made is, were additions that have made over the last few years, which is getting a lot of information out to when the clerk's office is going to be open and not open, absentee ballots, things of that nature. We also added, came into the new millennium by adding the website to the bottom and other information to the bottom. So, there's been a lot of, a lot of changes, a lot of opinions included in what we have, but that doesn't mean we can't, about face-on if anybody wants to. Any further discussions? All right. So, with, so we have a motion to approve what is before us. I'll just make a motion to amend the proposed postcard to correct that script. Here's our, so it reads 2018, 2019.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lapelis is our second.
I just had one.
Mr. Condon, he seconds the motion to amend. Discussion, Mr. Reed?
I didn't know April third was a Tuesday.
It is.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Easter is on the postcard.
Oh, it is? All right, got it. I'm looking at the wrong map.
Yeah, Easter's just that side.
Any further discussion relative to the amendment? All right. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Any amendment? All those in favor? That motion carries nine to zero. So, we have what we believe to be is a date-corrected budget postcard. Any further discussion on that card? All right. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor and against? Nine to zero. Thank you very much. We have second, public participation. Would any members of the public want to participate? Mr. Ossler? Thank you for participating. Please come forward.
Now, you can't talk about.
We already have your name and address. I don't necessarily think you have to do that again, so don't waste your time.
It's Lee Ossler, two seven two Stanley Road. I was also taken aback by what Ms. Lapelis said about the towers and the cell phones being out of tower. What, does the town have contracts with the tower companies?
With.
It's, I think, I, I don't know. I found it interesting because when we, when we finally got power back, most of our family lives out of state, Pennsylvania, and they were seeing all the, the bad, the bad things that were happening to us up here and they couldn't get in touch with us and neither could we call out. I think that's, that's a real issue. If you had a 911 call, where would you go? So, is there any way that we can, or the town can talk to them? And I can't, I was really taken aback because I thought that certainly a cell tower would have a backup generator. It really surprised me that we were out of, out of the world somewhere. And so, I, I didn't know if the, if the town had a contract with them, so that we could go back and say, "Hey, you know, this is a crisis issue. If you had a heart attack or somebody, you get in touch with a live wire somewhere, how would you get in touch with the, with 911?"
We typically don't provide responses, as you know, but since you've been such a great participant this evening, if someone has an answer to it, I'd be happy to have you respond, Mr. Kellogg.
So, I think what I'd like, we can be offline, we can discuss who your, your carrier is and then, because it sounded like you, it wasn't like you didn't have power, you literally had no signal.
Yeah.
So.
I assumed that they had no power to keep it open.
Yes, I had power. I had a generator.